Hi everyone, my name is Kelly and this is Next Gen Marin's podcast, Priced Out. Today, we have District Five, Nevada City Council Candidate, Hopeful, Ms. Amy Peel. Amy, thank you for coming on the podcast.
Thank you for having me, Kelly. I'm very excited.
I'm excited to talk with you today about, you know, your background and how you decided to run for City Council? And what you plan to do should you make the City Council? So, let's start with your background. Can you tell us a little bit about you?
Yes, I was born and raised in the Midwest, outside of Chicago, in a place called Park Forest, Illinois, 60466. It's actually fun because it was a city that was designed after the World War II for affordable houses. So, people got the GI Bill and my mom and dad had a house built. And my mom and dad were married, they had six kids. My dad left, my mother ended up raising all six of us by herself, paying the mortgage on a salary of a private duty nurse. So, those are my origins. And then I went to nursing school, I am a RN, and I became a nurse. And then I became in love and passionate with the field of organ transplantation. So, and then that's been a career, we can talk about that later. But then I became involved very much nationally and then got recruited out to San Francisco in 1985. And I've lived here ever since. And my husband and I, Mark, raised our two kids in Nevada. Gracie, who's 31, and she is a butcher and a fishmonger, as well as a chef and a farmer. She lives in Eugene, because she can't afford to live in Marin or in the Bay Area. And my son Bennett Schatz graduated from UW and his degree is in digital arts, experimental media, and comparative history of ideas. That's really all I can tell you about those topics. But he works at Dolby Sound in San Francisco and he lives in Oakland. So, that's a little bit quick about who I am, where I came from.
Nice. So, it sounds like working in a transplant sector of a hospital is very, you know, fast-paced and very crazy. What can you tell me about your work there in terms of how it will apply to you running for City Council?
First of all, I would like all your listeners to think about whether or not they want to be an organ and tissue donor. And if they do, they can sign up on a national registry, because we have a huge waiting list and 33 people die every day from lack of a transplant. So, just a little commercial break for organ and tissue donation. My job is a transplant coordinator and then Director of Transplant at UCSF. I was in charge of about 120 staff. I worked with five unions, I worked with about seven managers, and I had a huge budget. And every day, we had a lot of controversy, because part of our job is to decide who gets on the list and who doesn't. So, it was a big table of really competent professionals who all had equal vote, whether they were a doctor, financial counselor, social worker. And we all sat around, listened to the updates on these patients, and then we had to make a hard decision. So, we dealt with scarce resources, only our scarce resources were organs. So, if someone didn't get one, they died or went on dialysis. And all those skills over the last 35 years in my transplant career are the ones that I can bring to City Council. I was over, I know budget, I looked at and had to oversee a budget. I had to work with a big group of people to make sure we're all moving in the right direction, because there's no room for error in what we did. I like to have a healthy discussion and collaboration and not afraid of that debate. But also, at the end, we all had to, you know, make a decision. Sometimes you didn't get your choice, sometimes you did. But we all walked away and we all act professionally. Our motto was "Transplant's a Team Sport," and it was and it is. And City Council should be a team sport. So, those are just some transferable skills from a 35-year career in transplant that I feel like I could show up at my seat on the City Council with some level of expertise, albeit a new topic.
Right. Well, thank you for that, as it, you know, relays between your previous career, your very long 35-year career, yeah, to your running for City Council. What made you decide to run for City Council for Nevada?
There's a couple of things. I've lived in Nevada for 30 years. My husband and I moved here to raise our two kids and we loved it. I tell people I have a Nevada heart. I love it here. And I really, really want to, I want to grow old here. I'm a vibrant, healthy woman. I'm 66, just had a birthday.
Happy birthday!
Thank you. And when I was, when I retired five years ago, I also got trained to teach yoga at the Chopra Center. So, I teach chair yoga. And I feel like I bring some sense of what a senior can do and wants to do. And I have a lot of energy. So, I think those are some things that I feel I can continue to kind of infuse into our city. And I know that we have wonderful people who, like Nancy Sangster, who is Head of Senior Services, who used to, she knows a lot about it. And we just have these vibrant senior, you know, community that's just percolating. And then we also have, like at the other end, we have the North Bay Children's Center that's got a huge campus scheduled. And what a fun idea to merge some of those energies with the seniors and the youth and bring that together. It's not a line item, cost item. It's a, we've got these resources with our seniors. We've got this beautiful campus that's going to get built. Why not, you know, just take those really wonderful resources? I also feel strongly and concerned about the immigration issues. And I was at the immigration rally recently in Nevada. And afterwards, I was approached by some of our leadership in the county and at the council level to say, "There's a City Council, District Five election coming up, and we really want you to consider"
Wow.
"running for it." Because they knew of my work prior in Nevada with a variety of huge volunteer things. And they felt like I would be a good, a really good person for the City Council with my energy. I have positive, I look at things in a positive way. I understand we have serious problems to solve, but I think we can do that collectively.
Yeah. Wow. Well, that sounds like, you know, a few definitely great reasons to run for City Council. I know that it's a very important election. I think that a lot of people are paying attention, especially this being the first election with district-based, you know, ballots and all that kind of stuff. So, my question also is, how will you, you know, if you do become City Council, which, you know, hopefully you do, a City Council member, how will you discern between, you know, representing Hamilton and representing Nevada as a whole?
What I love about the district election is if it was the bigger election, I would never be able to afford to run and also walk the entire city of Nevada. That's some serious walking there. So, I'm grateful for our districts. And people have come to me when I knock on doors or call and say, "We're glad we're going to districts, because now we feel like there's a person we can go to to talk about things." That being said, the seat will be then also representing the entire city. Well, fires don't stop and start at one district in Nevada. Our climate change issues don't start and stop at one area, one district. So, the issues, while I will hear them and be careful and support my constituents and residents in my district, there's a bigger picture here. And so, I feel like I'm educating myself and learning about all the issues. But there's, the common denominators are probably throughout all of Nevada. So, I feel like I can keep my eye on my district, but I also can serve a city. It's a part of the pie, but it's the real pie that makes the difference. And that's our city of Nevada. So, it is, it is, I don't think it's a little juggling, but I think in the end, I think it's a good thing for our city.
Yeah, I think that what you touched on about having, you know, the different districts, that is a great idea and the aspect that people can come to you and they can say, "Hey, Amy, I'm having some problems. Can you help me out?" Or, "Can you make sure that this is mentioned?" And so, it helps to make sure that the local elected officials are, you know, really representing their community. And hopefully, you know, with them being elected, whoever they may be, they will be, you know, accurately representing the people of the district in which they reside. So, I wanted to ask you about some of the important issues that you would like to focus on, should you be elected to City Council?
So, what I think is important first, just for the record and your listeners, this is a five-year term, which is big, because they're rotating. Eventually, things will be rotated with council members, so that there's the same people for a bit. And then you rotate new council members on. So, that's good. So, those people listening, I'm warming the seat up for you youngsters. Not youngsters, but people who have capacity, passion, and drive, because it's a five-year seat. And I'm hoping to serve to the best of my ability. But then, hopefully, someone listening will, you know, "Maybe I'll run for City Council." And I would invite folks to start thinking about that now. So, that's it. Just get grooming and getting in the next generation of really amazing people and energy. Issues, well, sadly, the first issue is I've been vetted at different organizations to endorse me. I just recently got the Marin IJ endorsement, which I'm very grateful for. I was nervous about that. People ask, "How are you gonna," you know, this Nevada City Council, it's just, it's, we get a lot of bad press. We haven't had good behavior. So, before we do anything, I think we need to have some civility and treat each other professionally and inclusively, and be inclusive. So, accepting who's sitting next to us, but not dressing down either a fellow or a woman council person or staff. So, I want to get us out of the media as a city that's fraught with horrible City Council angst and negativity. And day one, have us all sign at a public, picture taken, front of the paper, "I will behave professionally and inclusively, and I testify that in front of everybody in my city and in my county. And if I don't, I invite you to call me out." I think that needs to be job one, because we have to re-earn trust in our city. Some people are like, "Well, if the City Council's fighting like this and this is happening." Some people just say then, "I don't want anything to do with politics. I don't want anything." We need to change that. You know, that's why the districts are good. We have an opportunity here. Secondly, we have some budgetary issues that need to be addressed.
Definitely.
And it's big.
Yeah.
We have some pension issues that I've been accruing and-
About $47 million?
Yes. And that is a, this is big, exactly.
Just to, yeah.
Just to throw that number out there.
Right.
And the good news about that is that we're not alone. All the cities in Marin County and many cities around, you know, California-
Yeah, an aging demographic in Marin County, yeah.
Right. So, we, but we need to address this. We have to think about it. I don't come to you with lots of answers about that. I've heard some interesting suggestions about how we might be able to pay that down. But I think people who have been promised pensions, they need to get their pensions.
Right.
Maybe we have to look at when we recruit people and onboard them, what is it realistic in today's world? What can we truthfully offer and really deliver versus offering? And then at some end, say, "Oh, I'm so sorry. We don't have the money to pay." We just can't get ourselves into that. But it, and that's more of a big study hall, council, community thing that we have to roll our sleeves up.
One person can't have the answer to that.
No, and nor should they.
Right.
So, that would be, I think, a healthy debate. And then affordable housing, we need to find a new word. I don't think there is such a thing as affordable housing, at least here for us. There might be some pockets, but I know for a fact in places in our districts, such as the Villas, that they, folks have gotten in there under affordable housing, because they're on a fixed income. But once they're in, there's fees levied and there's other issues that happen. And then people are evicted because they can't afford
Right.
"to live there, even though they qualified." So, we have to dig deep and we need to expose some of the issues that these people who we think are in affordable housing have. And what's going on? And what's, who's leaving Nevada because they can't afford to live here? It's not just seniors, it's young people.
Well, like your daughter, right?
Yeah, my daughter Gracie, she was living here. She's, she's passionate about the food industry. She's a farmer. She went to Italy and learned how to raise pigs and butcher pigs in a sustainable and appropriate way. She also is a farmer and a fish, and then, and she's also a chef, but living here. And she was living with us for a while and it just, she didn't obviously want to in her twenties. And now she lives in Eugene, Oregon. So, now I have a daughter who I love, who I'd love to see a lot more of. And I get to see her maybe every two or three months. And that makes me sad.
Yeah.
And I think that there's, I'm not alone. I know a lot of families whose kids live somewhere else and we just love to get our hands on our kids and wish them well and help. We won't, you know, you know, they don't want you around all the time.
Yeah.
But just to be able to drive over, you know, or take her dog for a walk, or watch her dog Luigi while she's on vacation.
Yeah.
I'm all for that. So, affordable housing is really becoming more and more of a big issue for me to dig into and learn more facts about and then figure out ways to really create it.
Yeah. Well, I would say that your daughter Gracie, sounds like she'd be a perfect fit for like West Marin, Point Reyes out there, because, you know, with the whole, the whole ag concept and, you know, being a chef and all that. That, you know, would be great. And they are, you know, the county just purchased the Coast Guard housing out in West Marin. So, that, you know, maybe some of it will be affordable. It's planned to be. But yeah, affordable housing, that's a big issue, and especially with the seniors that we have. I know that Hamilton has done a pretty good job of affordable housing, you know, over there. And there are a couple of projects still in the works. One project that I was excited for was a cohousing in Hamilton. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's starting to evolve. But I love the idea that you have a living space, but then you have shared, other shared amenities. I don't know if you know, in Berkeley, they have a tool library.
Yeah.
So, how cool is that? You don't have to go buy all these tools. You can just check them out of the library. The same concept, but within a bigger space of communal living that people could actually afford and actually maybe have money left to go have a little fun. You know, hop on the Smart Train, go down to Nevada, have a little bite to eat and hop back with your senior discount, if you're a senior.
Yeah, there is.
Or if you're a student, I bet you get a student discount. So, I think that that project over there is evolving. I don't know the exact status of it in terms of when the doors will be open.
Right.
But I'm excited and behind that kind of thing.
So, what were some of your thoughts on immigration and what you can perhaps do to protect some of Nevada's citizens?
Well, I was recently, we had our High Holy Days at Temple, and the woman who runs the Marin Alliance in the Mission, in San Rafael, was there. So, this last year, we've had 196 immigrants without family, mom or dads, who are not 18, come into our county. 196. Their families felt strong enough for them to get out of where they were, to get somewhere that they might have a life. And think about that from a parental perspective. That's, that's a pretty big thing. So, where does that come? Well, I went to the, you know, locally in Nevada. I'm very concerned about immigration. That's why I went to the rally. And I, and there was a question at the League of Women Voters panel earlier this week about immigration. We, we will, and probably already have, I don't know specifically where, a child comes out of school thinking his mom's going to pick him up and his mom's been picked up by ICE. I mean, we need to have a plan with the school district and the police to make sure that the families know what their rights are, because there is a lot of that out there. They know what, they've got scripts for these people if there's knocks at the door. But we need to embrace them, welcome them. The fact is, we are all immigrants.
Right.
All the way up to the top of the White House. So, we need to treat them with respect. And I was infuriated when I saw what was happening at the border and these kids put in cages and separated from their parents. My heart just broke. So, honestly, that's another thing that's fueled my intention to win this race. We have to, we have climate change, we have immigration issues right here in our own town, right here in our own county, right here in our own state. And I feel like we have the presence of mind and the collective resources intellectually and fiscally to own it and work on it, because it's disturbing.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. I mean, I think that that's been a pretty big topic. I think that there is kind of an, not an, I wouldn't say underserved, I would say underrepresented, maybe, a community here in Nevada and in Marin and the Bay Area. You know, we've seen a large increase in the number of Latino people who have come around, who have come around. And I have heard that as a big concern. We had Jim Hoagaboom, the former Nevada Superintendent, on the podcast. And he talked about, you know, students who were illegal immigrants and they were worried about, you know, their families and things like that, and making sure that ESL students are getting, taken care of the way that they should be. And that was of really big interest to me, especially in this election. You know, is making sure that people who maybe don't have English as their first language are being represented in the election. And they are, you know, made sure that their issues are being, you know, talked about at the local level. You know, just because it maybe doesn't affect you or I, doesn't mean that we shouldn't talk about it. So, I appreciate your stance on that and your standing up to do for what is right.
Well, and with the election, you know, the ballots are in English and you can spend an extra $500 to have yours translated into Spanish, translated into Spanish, which we did, which I did. But I go, I love Indian Valley College and the library and the campus and all that. These students should feel safe. At the same time, if they want to go and get a green card or want to continue to work towards citizenship, we should also have a pathway for them, so that we can make it as easy as possible for them to get on that pathway and partner with them, you know, to get them towards citizenship. But meanwhile, having them feel safe, because they want to contribute in a positive way to the community that we live in now. And ESL, I mean, you know, people can't speak our, you know, English. They have to be able to speak in their fluent language and communicate their issues, so that they're top of mind and that we bring those and weave those in to whatever we're doing in terms of moving policy forward or passing certain things at the council level.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been thinking of taking Spanish classes again to kind of refresh that, just because of that. So, when you speak of safety, something else that comes to mind is climate change, which you'd also talked about. You know, wildfires come to mind, sea level rise comes to mind. Obviously, a City Council member cannot, you know, completely face these things on their own. But is there concern from people in your district about those things? And what are they hoping to have you stand up for on their behalf, if you become City Council member?
Well, a couple of fun, really great stuff's going on around this. So, clearly, it's not if we're going to have a fire, it's when we're going to have a fire. And we have, I don't know if you've heard of our Fire Wise Communities, which are robust. Pacheco Valley has a Fire Wise Council, if you will, that meets frequently. And they are off the charts with what they're doing with their ownership of their area and what's growing. They have the Fire District Marshal come, they have folks come to talk with them. There's grants available to clear those things that are flammable around their house. There's a great lecture that's really well-done. There's going to be one at Nevada City Hall on October 16th at 6 o'clock, that you can go and hear it all laid out in perfect, organized way about what's, what's the state of the art and what's being done. The Marin Valley Country Club also has a really strong Fire Wise. I mean, there's many of those. That is so informative. I mean, and I'm, I'm like a geek now, because I go to their meetings. And I also know that that big rosemary bush out front of my house has to be taken out, because it's flammable, right?
I love rosemary, yeah.
Me too. So, I'm just going to put it in a pot, because I do, I cook with it. But there's things you can actually do as a homeowner, or if you rent, to make sure the things near you are, that are flammable, are gone.
Yeah.
So, there's really great ownership for the fire issues here. I'm really proud to live in Nevada and be running in this district, because I'm so inspired. Kay White is running the Fire Wise Committee at Pacheco Valley. And they've got everything to what, what happens if there is one, what you should do. Stay in your car, don't get out of your car, where the eggs, you know, what will happen? I mean, they are rehearsing, so that they are ready, as are other Fire Wise groups. But that's taking ownership. In terms of sea level issues, climate change, one, I think we also have to think about owning our own carbon footprint. What are we doing every day that we could do differently that would affect bringing climate, bringing it down?
Well, it's transportation emissions. That's the number one factor now.
Right. And we look at our freeway next to us and the cars. How can we get people out of their cars to either go on Smart Train? And if there's that at-last-mile issue that people talk about, can the businesses or collectively, can we think about a shuttle that picks somebody up and takes them that last mile that already exists and maybe expanding their routes? But also, with the sea level over in Hamilton, we have to worry about the levee.
Right.
There's two levees. And that makes sure that we, those are maintained. And if they need to have some work done on them, which they will, and they, that, that's on the radar screen in terms of safety. And, you know, I think we need to have some fun campaigns about even plastic. You know, a high school student from Nevada High came to one of the meet and greets and she's like, "What about plastic?" And I go, "Well, how about we treat plastic like poison ivy?" So, let's say, one day at high school, you can go, see if you can go all day without touching, touching a piece of plastic, like as if it was going to give you this horrible rash.
Right.
You know, there's things we can do that aren't going to cost a lot. And clearly, there are things that will cost money and we need to tend to that. But I think we have enough really intelligent youth and people committed to really kind of continue to increase the awareness around all of, at least, even if you just tackled plastic in Nevada for a year and just see, you know, baby steps. In addition to getting people off the freeway, in their, out of their car, and if we can get, you know, more bikes or bike paths for the last mile, things that, you know, are sustainable.
Right. Well, I, I went to a meeting a couple of days ago, and that was in San Francisco. And it was about, it was with ABAG, Association of Bay Area Governments, and MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So, they are looking at, you know, how the region, the Bay Area is doing in general in terms of transportation and connectivity. And they're looking at fixing that last mile and seeing what kind of programs they can implement in the local jurisdictions to alleviate that. So, you know, hopefully, they can come up with something. But Nevada, if they can come up with something first, that would be great too. Yeah, because I know that, I mean, I live on a hill, so, I live in San Rafael, but I do pay a lot of attention to Nevada. I live on a hill, so for me, like, I have taken public transit before. I've taken, you know, the Smart Train, I've taken all those things, and I like it. And, you know, I enjoy the reduced costs and not sitting in traffic and not contributing to, you know, emissions. But for me, that last mile is like, am I going to come home from work and have to walk up my seep hill? Like, I don't want to do that. So, that is a really big topic that needs to be addressed. And like you said, working with employers who can, you know, get that program into action. Like, I think that's part of what we need to do. So, that would be a great thing. I think more people would be willing to go on public transit where that option provided, you know?
Right. My husband, Mark, he has to work in the city sometimes. So, his, he loves to not get in his car. So, he walks from our house at Sunny Cove to the train, Smart Train, takes the Smart Train down to San Rafael, goes to the bus depot, gets on the bus, takes the bus to the ferry, takes the ferry into the city. So, it seems like a little bit, I know the Smart Train eventually will go to the ferry. But he, you know, of course, he's a reader, so you got the books going on there. And then, you know, whatever you want to do with the phone, either read your email or play a game, there's always choices there. But I think, you know, thinking creatively when you can. Now, if you're working full-time and you're putting in eight and 10 hours, like you said, by the end of your day, it's like, "Oh, my gosh, I have to walk up that hill."
Right.
Right? Where's the escalator when you need it?
Yeah.
Moving walkway.
Yeah.
But I think keeping it front of mind. I think, wouldn't it be great if everyone goes, "Wow, did you hear what happened in Nevada? They were able to do da-da-da-da-da-da."
Right.
I mean, we could turn some positive heads.
Right. And I think that's really important for Nevada at this time. And I think that's one of the reasons why this election will be so pivotal. I think that Nevada needs some positive energy. You know, there's been a lot of stuff happening with Nevada in terms of administration and, you know, things that you see or hear at meetings. It's time for a new era in Nevada.
It is, a brand-new time. I think this is just, that's why I'm really excited, because while I hear the day-to-day things and honestly, when I talk to some people, I go, "Are you crazy? You're running for City Council? What are you thinking?" And I'm like, "Well, you know what? I have a lot of positive energy. I can roll my sleeves up. I can get things done." But I want Nevada to be like a destination where people come and go, "Oh, wow, you can't even believe." If you took an aerial shot of Nevada, you've got our Buck Center that just got a $32 million grant, studying aging, dementia, all those issues that are, you know, continuing to rise. That's in Nevada. You've got Indian Valley College. We're going to have a new aquatics swim thing. I'm a swimmer. We've got the beautiful library. We've got the classes there. Beautiful, you know, the whole surrounding, the trees and everything are gorgeous. We've got great schools. And we've got Bio Marin and we've got a little biotech industry, a little pop there, which is kind of cool. So, we've got some fixins here.
Yeah.
And then you've got, like I said before, you know, we've got our bay, our children's campus. North Bay Children's Campus is coming up. The state-of-the-art is off the hook. So, yes, I'm not naive. I know there's problems to solve, but I look past those. And I say, "Wow, if we can get some synergy and some energy into looking at building this amazing city that people are in a holding pattern for, because we have so much great affordable housing. We got great jobs. We've got a vibrant downtown. We'd love to hire you, but I've got a waitlist now. I'm so sorry." You know, I mean, seriously, we could do that. It's not impossible. It's just not. I think it's possible.
Yeah, I love the idea of the seniors working with the kids. I think that, I think that everyone knows that seniors are more prone to depression and things like that as they age. And, you know, there, there have been programs, I can't name necessarily where, but where older folks work with younger kids and, you know, everyone just gets happier.
Well, it's like a cohousing thing that we were talking about. There's some in the United States, near campuses, which we have in, and Kenfield, but Nevada, and where they have, the students can't afford to pay for housing, so they give them a place- And where they have, the students can't afford to ha- pay for housing, so they give them a place to live for free. It might be to senior center, it might be in co-housing, but having that energy together with the seniors. And then they just hop the Smart Train, go to Hamilton, get on their bike, drive to IVC and then get back the same way. So you're kind of hitting a lot of things on that. And I think it's, you know, that's, that's kind of exciting for me to think about how we could like weave that all together.
Yeah, um, you also mentioned businesses. So um recently, there was, well, it's still kind of going on. Um, there was a first reading in Nevada of the acceleration of the minimum wage hike. Um, what do you think of that?
Well, I went to the one, I've gone to, you know, city council meetings, I happened to go that night, I didn't know it was gonna last till twelve thirty. But, you know, in for a penny, in for a pound. And what I took away or what I saw was the businesses felt like they got blindsided on this one. It sounded like they didn't know it was this close to some decision-making, so the room was full. And there were a lot of angry people, business owners, who felt they didn't have their time at the table, if you will. So when I just watched and listens, when I, when I see that kind of thing, first of all, I think we definitely need minimum wage, no question at all. Um, but I also think that we nee- when I, when I step back and say, well, how, how would I review this? Like, were our stakeholders at the table when we began this? Like, did we have the labor unions in, did we have the businesses? And then folks to all sit around a table and say, here's what we're thinking, this is what we like to do, let's all have our time and our discussion. I think that, maybe that didn't happen from what it looked like in that room and the anger and the screaming and the yelling and the finger pointing that was going on. So I think we have to partner with our small businesses, we don't wanna lose businesses and we don't want them to close up. And their profit margin isn't as big as people would think, because, you know, you own a business, people think, wow, you must be rich. Well, if you talk to some of the business owners here in town, that's not the case, they have a small profit margin. If we force-feed that fast minimum wage to them, are they gonna either have to let someone go? Or are they gonna have to close their business? So I, I think, I think it, we need the minimum wage, but I also think that there is a way to get there where we're not closing businesses down and be respectful for the folks who are working at minimum wage.
Right, yeah, well, I um, I agree with you. You know, I think that it's a very difficult topic and definitely had a lot of people, people fired up. Um, I was not able to attend that meeting because I was in class, but I, you know, that is one that I would have killed to be at.
Oh, yeah, it was quite something.
Yeah, um, but I was looking at Seattle, which did something similar, they accelerated their minimum wage hike. Um, and so, you know, a lot of concerns that I've had about it is, you know, increasing prices for the consumer, which would, you know, increase the cost of living in Nevada further. Um, also, like, you know, losing employees, so would people be fired and lose their jobs and then what are they gonna do? Um, or businesses closing down or moving away. Um, so obviously, Seattle is not Nevada, but it's good to look at something just for comparison to see, you know, what happened here. Um, so it said that the most frequent reaction to the minimum wage hike in Seattle was increasing prices. And they changed the employees' hours, so um low-wage jobs, they just had a reduced hour. So they didn't see as drastic a change as I think most people are fearing. I certainly hope that it doesn't come to, um, you know, businesses leaving. Uh, Nevada, especially in the past few years, from what I've heard, is focused on uh revitalizing downtown, having a very vibrant atmosphere. Come, bring your business, and we want it to be a great place to come, we want there to be nightlife, you know? Something exciting going on in Nevada. Yeah, um, which I want too. I mean, I used to, I work in Nevada, but I, you know, I used to work at Finnegan's and, you know, it's like, okay, what do we do here at night? Um, so trying to make it so, you know, older people like to be there, younger people, you know? Um, but something to support the local economy is very important.
And hopefully, they'll expand the civic center even wider than it is right now. Because right now, we have our, our administrative offices and we have our city hall, but there's discussions and groups that if we could expand things to have more space and facilities, to have more events, that could move, like, how about the food trucks? You know, at Fort Mason on Fridays, they do that one? And how about if we had that space to have food trucks come in on Friday with some music? So you get off work, you may go get a bite, if you don't want the music, you head home, if you wanna stick around for some fun and dancing, you can do that. Like, to your point about Seattle, I think we can always look outside and see who's already cracked this. Like, where is it working already? You know, and do we really need to reinvent the wheel? Or do we need to look outside and go, wow, this worked there, maybe we could, you know, play with it, mold it a little bit and make it work here? We think of our, we have our own hospital in Nevada, we are very lucky. That template for that hospital didn't get created for just that hospital, the way it's built, that was an existing blueprint. That was one way to save money to get that hospital built. We are very fortunate to have that hospital here, it's a great hospital, by the way. But there's ways for us to figure things out without having to start from scratch and make it last ten years to get to the final product.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I understand business owners' concern. Um, my only thing is that, to my knowledge, they're, they're accelerating it by one year, you know? And like, they're just speeding up the process, um, so eventually, businesses would have to pay these costs. Um, I, I feel like either way, it's going to happen. And I, I understand, you know, like you mentioned at the beginning, like, who was sitting at the table when this was discussed? And it sounds like businesses weren't involved, like, that's where the problem is.
Diagnose it from the back. You know, in my pa- past world in transplant and academia medicine, every Friday, we had this thing that we called uh Eminem Conference. Morbid Immortality, but the point is, we discussed every case, what went well, what didn't go well, what could we do differently next time? Every week, the whole crew was there and you learn so much, you know? So when we aren't doing something well, we should sit down and have a post-mortem discussion. Okay, what did we learn from this, what can we do differently next time? So we evolve. You know, it's not, I, I would, I know we'll make mistakes, but let's make new ones. And let's not make the same ones. So I think that, all of that, um, will help us be stronger and more vibrant and more productive.
Yeah, and I think that says a lot about your approach, the collaborative approach, working together. And, you know, I believe in the same thing, is looking back, okay, you made a mistake, what now? You know, how, how are you going to learn from this, how are you going to move ahead? And, you know, are you going to be able to work with those people who maybe don't agree with you? I think is one of the biggest issues um that the Nevada City Council has faced. Um, in terms of, you know, maybe people not getting together and then that, that goes into the community, you know? So it's just all over and it doesn't make for a pretty picture and certainly not pretty city council meetings, you know?
Right, and I got asked a question just before I came here at the panel up at the Marin Valley Mobile Home Park about which of the council members would you feel close to agreeing with or not? And I said, I, I would work with all of them. I think anyone who sits in a public seat deserves respect. I would wanna listen to and understand someone's perspective. I might not agree with it, but I don't need to make them wrong and I don't need to embarrass them in public. And I don't need to emotionally react, I need to understand the information and make the best decision. And I think cohesively, we can do that as a city council. So people like, wow, look at that, they're getting along, go team. And I think it's possible. I mean, you know, we have a United Nations, okay? Uh, we've seen things happen that people collaborate and have completely differing views. Or maybe they don't even like each other, but they sit around a table and they can talk. Because our eye is on the residents here and running a city to keep it fiscally competent, productive and up with the times. I mean, it's not about me, it's not about another city council person. I mean, I can bring my energy and my ideas, but you gotta park your ego at the door, look at the issues, get your information, understand it. And yeah, there's gonna be times when it's gonna be heated, good. Because if we all just sit around and go, five for, all five, yes, no, zero, let's go to the next, then I would worry as a citizen if everyone's like, oh, unanimous, oh, unanimous. It's like, wait a minute, you want that, but I think there's a way to behave publicly, to be professionally civil and inclusive.
Yeah, well, that's a great answer. Hope you didn't rehearse that.
Uh, no.
No, it's, it's great. Um, I also wanted to ask you about, you know, being on the city council, what about the permitting process? I've heard a lot about the permitting process, whether it comes to, you know, businesses, you know? And encouraging businesses to come to Nevada or, you know, maybe even housing, if we're really thinking radically. Um, you know, to increase the housing supply. Have you thought about, you know, maybe having a say in streamlining the permitting process and trying to get something done?
Hearing a lot about the permitting process, I'll tell you that. Um, what I understand is our San Rafael, down the, down the road a piece, if it's not any traffic. Um, has already done an uh, uh, analysis, if you will, did a survey. And they've gotten it back and they're looking at theirs, well, Nevada's currently going under the same survey for Nevada permitting process. So we are gonna get some information from which we can make better streamlining decisions. Because people, I mean, it's come up at all the different at-homes I'm at, at, when I knock on someone's door. This permitting process is, seems to be, and I don't know, pretend to know every step of the way of this blueprint. But we need to look at it, we are looking at it, we're gathering information, I know that will be brought to the city council. I'm sure the city manager will also be looking at it and we'll have to look at streamlining this and looking at the cost of permitting. Because some people wanna do some, some things that are getting approved, but then when they go get to the per- the permitting process, it's as much to get the permits as it is to do the, the renovation or the addition, which is, is insane. So I think we have some work to do, we have to definitely look under the hood of that and pull some things out and get this data from the survey and see how we can streamline that.
Yeah, because, you know, you have the time it takes to get the permit, you know? Um, that is not a quick amount of time. If you have any idea about doing some kind of home project or lord forbid, you know, going through the actual housing development pro- process, you know, publicly, undergoing planning commission, design review, if you need it, SEQA and city council, takes years to build things, you know?
There was a good article in the IJ by Dick Spotswood around the new, um, the Coast Guard, uh, did you see that? And it's worth a look because he's like, what can we do to accelerate this? What can we do in tandem too, you know, to get things moving? So that we're not years and years and years and years into the planning process.
Yeah, because the design process is there for a reason, you know? I care about Marin, I want it to look great, I don't wanna go around and have it be some big concrete box. But um, you know, we also, we need housing, we need, you know, we do have some commercial vacancies. So I don't know how much I'm gonna argue for, um, we need more businesses to, you know, occupy those vacancies, I will say. Um, but yeah, the process is really extensive, it takes a lot of time and it costs a lot of money. So um, that would be great to have a city council member up there, you know, pushing for that.
Well, I think I'm not alone, I think they're aware, acutely aware, there's an issue. And I think that by the fact that they've already, you know, commissioned the survey, that tells me they're aware of it and that now we get to look at the results and take some action.
Yeah, well, I'm very pleased to hear that they're doing a survey as well, I was aware of the San Rafael one, but I didn't know about the Nevada one.
And I hope you'll cover that on a future podcast.
Definitely, yeah. Um, I love reading the reports and just, you know, seeing all this research that they've done and show that they're really interested in helping out the community. Um, and that speaks to a lot when we consider, you know, like we've mentioned so much during this podcast, seniors, you know? They need an affordable place to live, some of them are not working and they're worried about their fixed income, you know? Like, how are they going to play, pay for these places? Um, and also, like, what does affordable housing mean? Does it mean, you know, really crappy-looking apartments or something, I mean, people need quality. Um, and what I've found in attending project meetings and stuff is in order for developers to, you know, get the money back, their investors' money back and make a s- a slim profit margin. And what people don't know is they think that developers make a lot of money, sometimes it's true, but I find that especially in Marin, you know, people don't like density, which is understandable, you know? We're not trying to make it San Francisco here or New York, okay, it's not, it's Marin, rolling green hills, it's beautiful. Um, but when developers build affordable housing and something like, oh, I'm gonna build a notable amount of affordable housing, maybe ten units or something, they're going to have to increase the size of that project. Which I don't think people realize that they need to make up the money for the BMR, the below-market rate unit somewhere. Um, so that is just like a really, you know, big issue that we're still working on, kind of working around with the public and um bringing forward the fact that developers, you know, they're the ones who are building this and we need to kind of work with them and not work against them.
And you know, I think that's right, you've gotta do a lot of work, we do, to raise the awareness around that. Because I think that there is this running assumption that the developers are bazillionaires. And that they're just gonna come here and make a million trillion dollars off of us. And eh, I don't believe that that's the case. You know, I was in Washington DC recently and I heard a fun thing, just a little off-topic but fun, I think you'd enjoy it. Um, so a friend of ours is an attorney with HUD.
Oh, cool.
Retiring, and in Washington DC, I guess all the buildings can't be any higher than eleven stories. So he's working with the folks who own those businesses to install solar panels, which ta- costs some money. But they wanna then take the energy from the solar panels and gift it to people who are in low-income housing, who can't afford to pay their electric bill. So they could probably get a tax credit, who, so they're recouping the cost of putting them in, in the, in the circuitry that it's required to gather the information. But then send those, those credits to people who, that would be one less bill on their plate. Should, should, should they be able to afford the rent, uh, but then they wouldn't have to pay the electric bill.
That would be really cool.
And that is a win-win that doesn't take, you know, again, a huge amount of resources. But test drive things like that, right?
Yeah, that would be really cool to do that for maybe like a senior assisted living, I know that they're talking about a lot of that. Um, you know, in Nevada, that would be really cool, that's, yeah, that's neat, I like that, yeah.
And again, it's something that's already gonna be underway, that we could invite him to come speak, learn about it, what were, what you, what worked, what didn't work? You know, where, where are we as a city, what's the possibility there? If we, you know, where could we get that kind of energy from the solar panels and then put it into? Maybe the school district needs help with their electric bills, so we could take that money and put it in the classroom. Right? And eh, what are the public services that we have or public buildings that we're having to pay appropriately for our rent and our, all of our utilities? Just things like that, that, you know, are creative, but wouldn't cost.
Right, yeah, well, this kind of thinking outside the box is, you know, I think that would bring like a refreshed, you know, just energy to the city council that I think everyone kind of needs at this point. Um, what are, what are your thoughts about using like Fireman's Fund for affordable housing?
I, I know, that's a big, uh, big, uh, big question, a big building and a big question. We have seven hundred thousand square feet there. Seven hundred thousand square feet that are, that is empty. When we do our assessments, which everyone has to do, the property assessments, we won't be getting any money because nobody's in there. Nobody's renting anything. So I think that um there have been in the past, I learned at one city council that they even called Google to say, hey, come on down. And Google's like, no, no, thank you. Now, I don't know, I understand the structure of the building, to, I don't know enough to know if it would really be something we could incorporate into a modern-day Google or whatever environment. I was just at Bio Marin and saw their renovation and it's airy and it's wa- big and it's really cool-looking in terms of welcoming spaces. But I don't know with the architectural structure of the Fireman's Fund. I think that is a really fun potential project for uh some, some architecture schools to say, okay, what if, just for fun, we took that square footage and that piece and figured out how to make a mixed-use building? How about if we had the co-housing? It's close to the Smart Train, right? What if we had some daycare, some, I mean, what, what would it look like? Give us some reasonable ideas of what would be possible. Even if it meant, oh, my god, changing zoning, oh, help me. But um to look at what would be a vibrant use of that location. And even, some cities have done competitions where they have a parcel and they say, here, you know, they do paid competitions. Here's the square footage, here is existing zoning, here is where it's at, this is what we need. We'll pay, you know, three comp- three businesses, architecture businesses, to draft some uh best ideas. And then bring them to the, the city, bring them to the, you know, the whole, the whole community to look at and get those wheels moving. And get some energy moving so we can get that space, you know, inhabited in a way that's helpful for where we are now today. So I would say, we need to do something about it. Um, I am not, you know, again, we don't wanna increase traffic, we already know what those narrows are like. But what can we do creatively, but in a realistic way, to keep moving that needle forward? Because it's kind of not, nothing's happening. And also, the younger families who I've met with while I've been doing my canvassing, they want more here for their kids. You know, they wanna have their parties here for, they're going to Roner Park or they're going to San Rafael, they want resources here in town. So that they can stay here. I know when we were growing, the kids were growing up, we went to the bowling alley over at Navee Lane. And we had, uh, New Year's Eve parties. The kids were bowling down here, the adults were down here. People loved to bowl, it's a good fun sport. I, I know, there's things, I wish we had a bowling alley.
I know, me too, yeah. Petaluma or San Rafael.
Yeah, so what kind of things, why, find out like a needs assessment of what these young fam- families are leaving Nevada. And then what does that list look like? And then how can we prioritize that list? And then what are some one or two things that we could actually do to get some of those things created? To keep the families here, they spend money here, we get their tax revenue here, and it's a win-win.
Yeah, well, that's a great point. And, um, your husband Mark is an architect, so I'm sure you guys have very stimulating conversation about, you know, potential future for Nevada.
Oh, we do, we do. And he's a community minded architect, so he has to go to all kinds of city councils all over the Bay Area at all hours, cause they go into the late night, early, early morning hours. But he's very passionate about creating community spaces that people use, like the Jewish Community Center that he did and the Mill Valley Community Center, where lots happens within those walls. And that's exciting, cause that's kinda where community starts, happens, and then the energy goes. And then, you know, who knows what happens next.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, that's great. Sounds like a dynamic duo right there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, I did wanna ask you about a couple more things, um, on, in terms of what, you know, Nevada is probably concerned with. Um, what about the cannabis industry that is, you know, so interesting?
Well, I love this question. And I just got it before I came here at the last candidate's forum that I was at. So, uh, I'm a strong supporter for people who need to use cannabis. One of the ladies at a house party I was at this week, her dad was dying of cancer. And she wanted to get some products for him, so he could be comfortable and a little less nausea. And she had to leave Nevada. She drove to a dispensary, cause she wanted to talk to somebody.
Right.
Here's my dad, this is what he's on. And she really wished she could've just driven across town. That said, I think if we work with our police department, school district and everybody to find the location, might not necessarily be right on Grand Street Street, maybe it shouldn't be.
Right.
Um, but we should look at test driving one dispensary in a location that the community can support with a reputable dispensary, cause it's happening. It's happening well in Catati, Sebastopol, San Francisco. I mean, this, in Oakland, this isn't like the first one in the whole world, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, it's legal. Um, a lot of seniors use it all the time, whether it's the rubbing their knees with that cannabis lotion that feels good. Because they don't want to use the pharmaceutical grade stuff that has side effects.
Right.
Um, so I think that it's time, but I think we need to be thoughtful about it.
Yeah.
Um, being in the medical field, because what we do at academia medical centers is we do a lot of bl- double blind studies where you have a new drug and you have different groups that you test. And then at the end, you share the results with the community at large. And then that's how we evolve. That's why the outcomes for liver, kidney and hearts are much longer now. But taking that over to cannabis, because it was, it's a, a, what is it, a Title I or whatever at the federal level, it's not legal. The, the amount of research that's been done with the THC products isn't much. But the CBD without the THC, the anti-inflammatory, better to take that than Advil. Cause in our world in transplant, when someone donates a living kidney, we tell them never to take Advil again. Because we wanna make sure that one kidney that's left. So there are choices. And it's a matter of understanding them, being a educated consumer like anything else. And making a choice that's best for your body and your mind.
Yeah.
And I think, um, there's many articles and, and, and information out there. You can go in sports basement now in Nevada and there's a CBD product case that's just CBD that athletes buy.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to have this stigma of, if you ha- if you smoke marijuana, now you're gonna be a heroin addict. It's just, it, we need to cl- bring ourselves up to current day, get a good, another good, best demonstrated practice, reliable dispensary, talk to the cities that have already done it, what worked, what didn't work, what didn't you see coming? Learn from them and then get community involvement, make sure our kids are safe and test drive one. That's not on our main thoroughfare, but in a place that's not gonna cause a lot of traffic congestion. But keep, you know, I think that's a logical, reasonable approach.
Right, yeah, I agree with you. Um, I was up in Runt Park with my friend where she lives and she needed to go to a dispensary. And so we went to one up in Santa Rosa, my first time, being at one. And, you know, it was early in the morning, you know, just opening up on a weekend and, you know, it was all different kinds of people. You know, you had people in business suits, you had us, you had other, you know, just all kinds of people. But we went in and I was really impressed with how they built it, you know? So it was an industrial area, so it's not, like you said, on like the main thoroughfare where families or kids are gonna be like, what's that mommy?
Right, right.
Um, but I was very impressed with how, you know, this thing that used to be illegal and so taboo and now people are embracing it and cities are like, hey, we can get some taxes from this. You know, I think that that's impressive. I agree that we're gonna have to be mindful with where we place it in terms of protecting our children and things like that, but, um, you know, why not?
Good point, though. I mean, if people are concerned that it might just be increasing drug trafficking, they should go sit outside, park outside one of those and look them up online and watch the number of people of all ages. Not minors, cause you can't get in anyway.
Right.
Uh, but professionals, uh, seniors, uh, business people, all go in and out of there to get what it is they need in a appropriate, organized, safe fashion.
Mm-hmm. And I was really impressed also with, you know, their level of safety and making sure that people were of the proper age and you sign documents when you first get there, like, it's not like you can just come in and go out if they don't know you, you know? So it's regulated and they're paying attention.
They take it seriously.
Yeah.
As they should.
Yeah, so I, I wanted to ask you about that, because that's been, um, a recent topic. Um, let's see, maybe also talking about taxes. I don't know, um, so Nevada's general fund is, I think, about forty something million, right?
Right.
Um, so we have some temporary measures, to my knowledge, um, some sales taxes. And there is a lot of concern about how Nevada is going to sustain their budget. Um, are you thinking, have you, have you any thoughts about this?
I do, I do. I, I mean, again, I don't know the entire budget. Uh, I haven't been able to study the entire di- it's quite a big binder, by the way. Um, so you really have to have small, frequent feedings on that one. But, uh, I, I understand that we did pass a tax, we were supposed to pass a half a cent tax, but we only did a quarter cent. And it seems like people looking in the rearview mirror thought, maybe we should've done the half cent tax that would brought about two and a half more million, I understand annually. That might not even have done it.
Right.
We also have the issue with Costco here that we get a lot of taxes from that are now looking at setting up shop down the road. And if that happens, you know, Costco has said they'll keep their sh- their store here. But if they open the one in San Rafael, we'll have less people coming, we think.
Right.
But we have to be mindful about that. And so, I, I think that, to say that you can, you know, we're not gonna raise any taxes or do anything is not a fair statement. Um, I don't come to this election with an axe to grind or preconceived ideas. I think I need, I need to continue to study our fiscal health and it is not that good right now. Part of it is because of our pension issues. But part of it is that we need to really look at where we are, what we project. And now, when I was in my position as director, we, every month, I had to look at my budget and see where we were to date. Now, I understand Nevada doesn't do that at this point. They don't have a mechanism. So we really need to, every month, where is the money? What have we spent? You know, do that, that kind of fiscal, uh, responsible thing every month and have a system. It can be done, obviously, for doing it at UCSF, which is a huge medical center.
Yeah.
My department, there is software and information out that we can look at that, month by month, year to date. Um, so I think that there's pieces that need to be in place. And I think that it's gonna be a collective city council, ho- big homework assignment and discussion to see how it is we're gonna stabilize ourselves from a budgetary perspective. Cause it clearly is, if we, if we don't, we're gonna continue to be, um, in trouble. And, uh, you know, do you, do you not repair the pothole because you had to pay, you know? Safety's always first, we know that. But we have to be able to look at where our money's being spent and continue to be good shepherds of our tax dollars and then be transparent with the community. So that they, if we see it coming, they should see it coming. Meaning if we're gonna have to go to taxes, it's a transparent process.
Right, and transparency is, you know, a very big issue and I think a very big factor in how, you know, members of, you know, local elected officials are perceived. Is there transparency? Are they being honest with their constituents? Um, so that's great to hear. Um, a little bird wanted me to mention that they would like to see Nevada and, you know, maybe even Marin, but you can help with Nevada. You know, be a little bit cleaner and cleaned up, maybe, you know, in terms of landscaping and trash and things like that. Um, you know, just making sure that Nevada stays beautiful. I, I like having a clean space in Marin and, you know, you wanna be proud you're from Nevada. Um, so just making sure that it looks nice, you know, because we want people to want to come to Nevada.
And not have it all, a lot of litter and a lot of things going on. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm with you on this one.
Yeah.
And, you know, clean as you go even, you know?
Yeah.
Just making sure people are aware. We hope people are aware that you don't throw trash out the window or just, you know, leave things for someone else to clean up. It is almost a level of consciousness raising within the entire community. But yes, absolutely. And maybe have, you know, like they, we have the cleanup at the, at the ocean sometimes. We have groups that go, you know, have a, a Nevada cleanup day for fun. And I know some, my son Bennett was a, um, boy scout and then became an Eagle Scout, believe it or not, thanks to his, thanks to Joanne Keenan. She's, she, all these boys, they got to their Eagle Scout, which isn't always done these days. But they all love projects. We have Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, we've got Rotary, we've got a lot of, you know, folks that if we just said declared, today is, you know, whatever that day, Nevada Cleanup Day.
Yeah.
Take an hour, go to this corner, do it. If we just dispersed and all took even a little part, can you imagine? Like, in, in, in quick time, then just take a picture of all the garbage we collected and say, okay, like, next year, maybe we can bring it down a little lower.
Yeah.
Just something like that.
Yeah, well, I think you have a lot of great ideas and very exciting, you know, to bring to Nevada City Council. Um, I would invite you at this time to say anything else, if you had a message you wanted to say for our listeners or anything else?
I do. Um, first, register to vote, wherever you are. Cause we have a big presidential election coming. This isn't about me. This is about taking the right that you have to vote. Whether you do absentee ballot or whether you do go to the polls, I think that's, that's job one. We, you know, a lot of people worked hard for get, to, for us to get the vote. So I think that's really important. Um, secondly, this election is a small election. There's only one thing on the ballot.
Right, yeah, I saw that.
And in each district, um, I wish we could've done it more efficiently and less expensively than having to mail and do all that, but it is what it is. So people need to vote, uh, and get their ballot in for whoever they're voting for. Um, so don't forget to do that. It has to be in by November fifth, by, uh, the end of the day. Um, and just look at all the candidates and make the best decision for yourself. Uh, cause I think that's, that's the most important. If it's me, I'd love to serve the community. And if it's not, I'm still gonna serve the community. I'm not gonna sour grape it. It's just not how I'm, I'm made. Um, I think that we still need a lot more young people in civic positions. So why, if I win this seat, I expect someone to start showing up at year two and a half or three and saying, I want that seat. And I said, let's work together.
Yeah.
Let's make it happen. We need diversity on that city council.
Definitely.
And we need a diversity in age. You know, in Berkeley, there's a, a fellow that ran because he's a student, but he said, look at the student population in Berkeley.
Right.
We should have a seat on the table.
Yeah.
And they do.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at our demographics and our diversity and make sure that those people are represented in decision-making roles, whether it's on city council or whether it's on a commission. But I think we have to bring in the youth, so that they can start to create the kind of city they wanna live in.
Yeah.
Cause we're not gonna be here forever.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm hoping to live long.
Yeah.
But I also wanna pass the baton.
Right.
Cause I don't think anybody should be on the city council over and over and over and over and over again. We need fresh ideas, we need fresh energy, and I think that's possible, but we need to get the word out.
Yeah.
So that, that's kinda my parting statement.
Well, that's great. Thank you so much for being here today. Um, thank you listeners for listening in. Um, this is Amy Peel, running for District Five for Nevada City Council. Again, make sure you get out and vote. My name is Kelly Cromhout. Thank you for tuning in and we'll talk to you guys next time.